I'd like to call to order the August 2, 2016 meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. I would ask that you join me and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll do the invocation. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd join me in prayer. We often complain about the heat, the cold, the rain, the snow, and the weather in general. We're thankful we live in a place where the weather enables us to live, work, and enjoy our lives. We appreciate the four seasons although we often focus on the extremes rather than the amazingly pleasant and temperate range we live in. Thank you for the summer and each season with the gifts and adjustments we make every few months into new seasons. As we head into autumn and the reopening of schools, help us to appreciate the changes and the natural beauty that reflects your perfect creation. Thank you for our mountains, thank you for the people that live in our mountains, and the opportunities you give us to help other Buncombe County citizens. Help us to appreciate each citizen and the contribution of every one of us to make Buncombe County and our region the best place possible to live in. Thank you for the wonderful county staff that works so hard to perform at the highest level possible. We're very fortunate to have such talented and diligent people working to make our county great. And thank you for these men and women who seek and hold elective office like the folks to my left and right. Give us wisdom and insight into the issues that come before us in our official capacities, and we appreciate the opportunity to try to do good things for people and to help others. Amen.
Amen.
In accordance with the rules of ethics adopted by the Board, all Commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding their official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Also, does any Board member have any financial interest in any public contract coming on before the Board today? Hearing none, I find that none of the Board members have any conflicts and each has a duty to, an obligation to vote. The Commissioner Jones is unable to be with us tonight. She has some family emergencies that she's dealing with. She will join us under New Business for a telephone discussion and participation through that. I find that her presence by telephone is within our rules of procedure and she satisfies all the qualifications to participate in that way. Is there a motion to follow the agenda, including adoption of the consent agenda as it's been published by the public, for the public?
Someone.
Been a motion by Commissioner Frost. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Moffett? Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion is adopted by a six to zero vote. Next, we have good news and proclamation, and we have some really good news from Hominy Valley and INCA. So we're looking forward to seeing them. We'll start off with the Hominy Valley Under Six All-Stars.
Public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was so anxious to get to you, I skipped part of it. Excuse me. Thank you. Public comment. Time limit for any comment to the Board is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any questions along with your name, address, and phone number, or email with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on matters during public comment. This is your time to talk to us. Comments should be limited to subjects that are within the jurisdiction of the Commission or pertain to matters upon which we may act. Any individual speaking during public comment shall address the entire Board. Any polling of Board members is inappropriate. Persons addressing the Board are expected to observe the decorum of the chamber and to be respectful of everyone in the room. Any person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts the session will be asked to leave the meeting. The Commission reserves the right to deny public address on any subject previously presented to the Commission. So before we get to the All-Stars and State Champions, let's see if we have any public comment. Any member of the Board wish to be heard tonight, or any member of the public wish to be heard tonight? We'll hear from the Board, too. Mr. Rice? Anybody else after Mr. Rice? Yes, ma'am, yes, you can come on up. Just come on up and sit in the front row, and after Mr. Rice is finished, we'll let you speak. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Rice, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Sorry I didn't get to be with you on the budget adoption, but a few words on that tonight. When I started years ago, the fund balance today is almost equal to the whole budget at that point in time. So I've been around a long time. So I want you to clearly see that when it's a few million dollars, and I'm talking about below a hundred and below fifty, and now it's over 408 million, that ought to say something to us today as taxpayers that somebody is sure getting a lot of money for what we're doing. So we expect something out of it. You failed to pass anything to give us taxpayers a relief, and I think that is a bad policy after years of suffering that the taxpayers had. The other thing, the reevaluation that you passed should have failed because the attorney gave you advice that you shouldn't go forward, and you went forward anyway. That is going to be a substantial 20% increase, at least, if not much, much more. So I'm just bringing all this big money to the attention of the taxpayers sitting in this audience, which I'm proud to say I'm from INCA, and to see the Sugar Jets and them little ones here tonight, I appreciate them. And we ought to be as humble as these little folks are. That's what we ought to be. Now, I've talked about the budget for a reason. You're talking about a resolution today for the Sheriff's Department, and we talk about and brag about how great these people are. We ought to show them how much we appreciate them because when your department heads are making more money, in their budgets, every year or every other year, they get substantial raises, and these poor people that's on the front line of safety don't get it. We've got school teachers at $50,000, pretty close, national average at $40,000 years ago that we fought for. Okay? Now, yours, the Sheriff's Department, the fire departments, they can't even make a wage to buy them a home. We ought to be ashamed to bring them up here, parade them in front of the public, and tell what great people they are, but we don't provide them the financial resources to take care of their home life. Now, that should be an absolute shame, and it is to me. Now, if you can't give a tax increase, I mean a decrease, to the public, my God, give it to somebody that counts, and that's these people that's on the front line. School teachers are important, but who protects the school teachers? It's the Sheriff's Department. You got the message, use it.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Yes, ma'am. Anyone else want to be heard after this lady?
Thanks for seeing me.
Thank you.
Mine's not so much a comment as a question. I'm here again, and I've been here last year.
What was your name and where you're from?
Stephanie Sizemore, and I am from Fairview.
Thank you.
I'm here representing my community. We are trying to get mixed beverage out in the county. It's been an issue that I've been looking into, but I keep kind of getting the runaround, and I need some answers to be able to give my community to tell them why we can't have mixed beverage out there. There's just a few in the county that can't get it because Buncombe County is a dry county for mixed beverage. It hasn't been on the ballot since 1933. The parameters that you can get, a liquor license is what we're basically talking here. We can get beer and wine, but we can't get liquor. The parameters seem to have covered just about everybody in Buncombe County's been able to get it where they want it except for a few of us. I've looked into the fact that Fairview's a township, and we've looked into that. I'm at this point just kind of not sure where to go with it as far as, you know, my community's asking for it. I have here a petition with close to 2,000 signatures on it, and I stopped the petition for a while. I could get as many signatures, I'm sure, as was necessary for it. I just really need to be able to tell everybody what my next step is.
All right, Ms. Sizemore.
If she'd like to leave her name with it and contact information with me, I'll get you the law around that, because there are some requirements related to corporate limits.
We've, I've read several laws. I've seen, I mean, I really have done my homework, and I would be happy to sit down, and I've, I kind of had stopped this for a little while because I was getting such a runaround of what to do. I got more information from the voter registration board than I got from anybody as far as what to do. Again, I stopped it because I didn't know what to do with it much anymore, but they're really hounding me on it, so I, here I am.
We'll certainly get it for you. We'll get you the procedure and the contacts.
Okay.
And if you'll just leave your name and number, we will get that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming here, Ms. Sizemore.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Any other public comment at this session?
Yeah.
All right. Then our first matter, we're going to get to the Hominy Valley Under Six All-Stars. So if you'll come on up, and Commissioner Belcher, and the coaches also. Commissioner Belcher wanted us to put this on our agenda, and we were thrilled to do it. So come on up, ladies, don't be shy. We're glad you're here. Yeah, just, yeah, that's good, just get in front, look at the crowd, because we're proud of you. And I know that Commissioner Belcher is very proud of you. Got your names on the back? You know, I had a jersey, and I didn't have a, when I did football, I had a jersey that didn't have a number on it. So, you know, you're way ahead of me, you got your name and everything. And if any parents want to come up and take a picture, we will, I will permit you to come on up right now if you'd like. Commissioner?
All right. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I do appreciate the young ladies showing out in their uniforms, don't you? And they won the Six and Under State Championship. And I have a, I'm going to read each of their names. I have a, what I'm going to do is I want to read one of the proclamations. Each of you will get one of these, okay? And you'll be able to take it home. And it's signed by all the Commissioners, and we're so excited to be able to do this. I do have one, and I want to do this at the beginning. Some of you are familiar with the story of a young lady by the name of Maya Grace Phillips. Her uncle is actually up there with the kids, and there's Tyson over here on the right. And, Miss, there's another young lady that's, and she is?
Carrigan.
Right.
Carrigan.
Carrigan. And we have, we have a certificate for her. Maya Grace was an integral part of this team in every way, in participation, in spirit, in providing strength to them, both spiritual and physical. I knew the grandfather and grandmother very well, the pastor and his wife at Pole Creek. When we decided to do this, and the Commissioners agreed to put this on the agenda, Maya was fighting gallantly, a battle with cancer, and she succumbed to that battle recently and has went to her home in heaven. And so, but, we have, for her family, we have this certificate for them to be reminded of what a sweet time they had together. So we're excited about that also. It's a bittersweet, a bittersweet thing to be able to do, but we're so honored to be able to be part of that today. So, the first one I have, and I'm going to let Tyson get this one, and I'll, I can take it to them, but all of them read this way. Buncombe County Commissioners recognize and honor Maya Grace Phillips, Hominy Valley Six and Under Inspiration, 2016 State Babe Ruth Softball Champion. On behalf of the citizens of Buncombe County, this Board is hereby express its sincere appreciation, honor, and pride in you as the inspiration to the Hominy Valley Six and Under softball team on the occasion of their state championship. We commend your bravery and strength, and know that you helped your team bring honor to your county. It's the second day of August, signed by David Gant and all the Commissioners. That is a specific one to Maya Grace, and I'll give that to her uncle now. Thank you. And y'all can clap your hands. Yeah, this is the good news part, so this is where we have the fun in the meeting, so. Okay, so the next, I'm just going to have, I'm going to have the girls come and get these. The next one, and I'll read this one, and the rest of these read the same. This one is to Avery Hearns, presented by Buncombe County Commissioners. On behalf of the citizens of Buncombe County, this Board is hereby express its sincere appreciation, honor, and pride in your accomplishments as a member of the Hominy Valley Six and Under softball team on the occasion, your state championship. We commend your hard work that resulted in victory. You brought honor to your county. And where's Ms. Hearns? There we go. Okay, reads the same. Reagan Fisher. There you are. How can somebody that little bitty hit a softball? I mean, obviously they kill it, right? Kippen Bayers. All right, bear with us. Miley Twitty. There you are. Ava Gibson. I'll give that to one of the coaches. Daniel Bears, that's Coach. All right, Savannah Frisbee. Don't you love the grins on their faces when they go? Okay, Morgan Freddie. People are not very familiar with the Freddie name out in the Kandler community, but anyhow. And Carrigan Phillips. Give all of them one more hand, or we'll tell them to sit down.
Thank you, ladies. Congratulations, we're mighty proud of you. Next, Commissioner Moffett will give congratulations to the INCA Sugar Jets softball champions, North Carolina.
Repeat.
Repeat again, two years in a row. Coaches, Sugar Jets, come on down.
Pretty good to have it. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Belcher, for bringing this, this good news to the Commission meeting tonight, and actually, this is great news. What we had before started the Sugar Jets, who are repeat champions, state champions in baseball, excuse me, softball. I'm a former baseball coach, so it's hard for me to think about softball. With extended members in my family that are also Jets, it does give me a distinct honor to recognize each of you tonight. Following Commissioner Belcher, I'll read the first certificate, and then I'll call each of you by name after that, and we'll go from there. So the certificate reads as follows. Buncombe County Commissioners recognize and honor Ashley McCurry, INCA Sugar Jets Coach, 2016 State 3A Softball Champion. On behalf of the citizens of Buncombe County, this Board does hereby express its sincere appreciation, honor, and pride in your accomplishments as Coach of the INCA Sugar Jet softball team on the occasion of your second 3A state championship. We commend your dedication, hard work, and leadership that resulted in an amazing season and ultimate victory. You have brought honor to your county, and we thank you. Signed, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, Chair David Gant, Commissioners Newman, Frost, Jones, Moffett, Friar, and Belcher. Ms. McCurry, is she not here? Okay. Jennifer Cruck, that's you? Not here? Okay. Lindsey Lyon? Not here? Making my job easy? Okay. Is that all the coaches? The four?
There should be two other big guys.
Two more? Melvin Rubio? Not here? Okay. Ryan Wright? Not here? Excellent. I'm good now? Down to the players. All right, since the players' certificate of recognition is a little bit different, I'll go ahead and read that one. Buncombe County Commissioners recognize and honor Kelsey Schuler, INCA Sugar Jet 2016 State 3A Softball Champions. On behalf of the citizens of Buncombe County, this Board does hereby express its sincere appreciation, honor, and pride in your accomplishments as a member of the INCA Sugar Jet softball team on the occasion of your second 3A state championship. We commend your talent, dedication, and hard work that resulted in your amazing season and ultimate victory. You have brought honor to your county, and we thank you. Signed by Commissioner Chair David Gant, Commissioners Newman, Frost, Jones, Moffett, Friar, and Belcher. Next up, Sienna Rector.
And if any parents want to come up and take pictures, you can get up for this.
Maya Smith? Not here? Okay. Taylor Duncan. Hannah McElreith, or McElree? The reason I, the reason I said it that way, they pronounce it McElreith in the east. We grew up McElree here. Whitney Fletcher? Not here? And Brittany Fletcher. Mr. Chair, that concludes this recognition. Sugar Jets, do we have a repeat? Hope so. Coach, start working on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Moffett, and everyone is welcome to stay. We're going to get on to other business, so if anybody wants to leave that came for this, you're welcome to exit in an orderly fashion. Thank you for coming, and we're mighty proud of all of you young ladies. I'll just take just a second to clear it here.
That means to sit on that side over there.
All right, we'll go ahead. Vice Chair is going to give the proclamation of appreciation to the Buncombe County Sheriff's Department. So, see Sheriff Duncan in the back there? Any representatives of the Sheriff's Department that wish to come up? Vice Chairman Newman?
Ben Madiavas.
Yep. There they come. And again, I thank Commissioner Belcher for bringing, giving this to our attention.
Thank you, Chairman Gant. Appreciate the opportunity to read this proclamation of appreciation to the Buncombe County Sheriff's Department on behalf of the County Commission. I think we have all had good cause to reflect on the great importance and sacrifice that our law enforcement professionals in our country make in recent weeks due to some of the tragic things we've read about and seen on the news. So we don't say thank you enough. These kind of events remind us of the sacrifice and dedication that these men and women provide. So I appreciate the opportunity to read this on behalf of the Commission. Whereas Buncombe County Sheriff's Department professionals play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all citizens, and whereas the problems of crime touch and affect all segments of our society and can undermine and erode the moral and economic strengths of our community and our citizens if uncontrolled, and whereas our Sheriff's Department officers recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and intimidation, and the weak against oppression. And whereas law enforcement is an essential yet hazardous profession that often presents grave risks to those who are involved in the delivery of service and protection, and whereas this Board is proud of our men and women who bravely serve their communities to make our county a better place to live in these trying times, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows: That this Board does officially express its continued support and appreciation for the work of the men and women who are employed by the Buncombe County Sheriff's Department; that all citizens in Buncombe County are here Buncombe County Sheriff's Department. That all citizens in Buncombe County are hereby encouraged to join this Board in carrying a message of respect and appreciation to these outstanding law enforcement officers. This second day of August 2016, on the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, signed by David Gant, Chairman of the County Commissioners. Sheriff Duncan, thank you.
Chairman Gant, Commissioners, thank you very much. We're very fortunate here in Buncombe County. We enjoy a very good relationship with our community. It is a tough time to work in our profession right now, but these gestures of letting us know how much you appreciate what we do are just priceless to us. We've had many members of the community come in to Lester Cross and over the past couple of weeks and show their appreciation, and it means a whole lot to these folks out here doing the job. I want to recognize my Chief Deputy Glenn Madiabas, my Major Terry Rogers, I've got my Finance Officer Sherry Powers in the back, and our PIO Natalie Bailey that you see on the news in the morning. But it takes that whole team to keep that relationship out there with the community, and we do appreciate all the support that you give to us in the way of equipment, this moral support, the things that you do that let us do our job safely and let us know that we're appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff and Chief. Our next order of business is a public hearing on the rezoning request of the Hints Bowman tract from R3 to S1. We have Debbie Trumpy here to talk about this. We will have a public comment after the presentation for any member of the public that wishes to be heard on this. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Trumpy?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, George Bowman and Randy and Sue Hints have applied to rezone two parcels located northeast of the intersection of Kennedy Road and Clark's Chapel Road totaling 7.62 acres from R3 residential to CS commercial service. The subject properties are currently vacant and have direct road frontage along Kennedy Road, Clark's Chapel Road, and Cole Road, which are NC DOT maintained roads. The property to the north of the subject parcels contains two single-family homes and is zoned R3. The property to the south of the subject parcels is across Clark's Chapel Road and contains the Michael Hatch Glass Studio and is also zoned R3. Property to the east is the off-ramp for I-26, and properties to the west contain a mix of single-family home types, including manufactured homes, which are zoned R3. The subject parcels were located in the Weaverville ETJ and were similarly zoned R3. When the ETJ was still intact, a conditional zoning was approved for the Michael Hatch Glass Studio. The applicants are seeking a rezoning in order to accommodate similar commercial uses. The proposed MAP amendment is consistent with the zoning ordinance, which states that the CS district is primarily intended to provide suitable locations for clustered commercial development to encourage the concentration of commercial activity in those specified areas with access to major traffic arteries. The Planning Department recommends approval of the rezoning as it is consistent with the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The 2013 update identifies moderate commercial development is highly suggested within reasonable proximity to major transportation corridors and water and sewer service areas. Both parcels contain previously graded areas of flat topography that are suitable for development along existing road corridors while preserving existing vegetation and topographic features that will screen adjacent lower-density residential development. The Planning Board held a public hearing on this application on June 20. The applicants described the commercial businesses in the area and their development plans. One parcel would contain a pottery studio, and the other would contain a building to store equipment for a grading landscaping company. At the hearing, one person spoke against the rezoning with concerns about commercial encroachment and traffic. The Planning Board found that the proposed MAP amendment is consistent with the land use plan and is reasonable in the public interest as it is compatible with surrounding commercial development, is readily accessed by multiple NC DOT roads and I-26, and is in close proximity to the town of Weaverville. The Planning Board recommends approval of the rezoning in a vote of four to two. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have right now.
Any questions for Ms. Trumpy before we start the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, could I be recognized for a question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Trumpy, for your presentation. In regards to the two stated businesses that they would like to locate on this property, are those going to be retail use type, or like is the pottery just going to be for production, or will they also have a retail component to that? And will the landscaping business just be a landscaping business, or will they also have kind of nursery operation there?
Because the rezoning is not attached to a specific development plan, anything that's allowed in the Commercial Service District could be put there, although the applicants indicated that the pottery studio would be mainly production with a very limited retail component to that. And the landscaping grading business, the applicant said that they were, his intention was just to construct the building for storage of the equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Trumpy. I'll declare the public hearing and the rezoning request, the Hints Bowman property that we just heard about, open at 5:02. Any members of the public wish to be heard on this? Yes, ma'am, just come on up, come right up, and sir, have a go around. Anybody else want to be heard? Just come right up and sit on the front row, and we'll recognize you. You'll be first, sir. Yes, sir, thank you. You'll give your name and where you're from in three minutes.
My name is Ed Doughty. I live at 167 Clark's Chapel Road, approximately three tenths of a mile from the proposed property change. I was not notified of this meeting nor of the Planning Board's meeting, even though I'm only three tenths of a mile away. One of my neighbors, two houses away, did receive a notice for both meetings. However, for some reason, we didn't. However, I would have been here for the Planning Board's meeting as well. Planning Board has a recommendation, which I found on your website, and the very last page of it says that this is inconsistent use of this property to change it to Zone CS. There is no sewage on that property. It's all residential around it. Mike Hatch's little glass studio is open from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., very low traffic. He's an artist. So, to put something like his business on a piece of property like that, and his is still zoned R3, would be consistent, but I think putting something with heavy equipment, storage, who knows what time of the day or night, they move that stuff in and out, could make noise, could cause a lot of disruption to the area. Everything else around it is R3. So, I urge you to deny the zoning change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Doughty. Yes, sir, you'll be next.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Chris Holcomb. I own 145 Clark's Chapel Road. It's a four-acre parcel, two houses down from this. Frankly, it's been in my family for eighty, ninety years. I inherited it. I live in a father, I live in a house my father built when he retired. He grew up in Weaverville. Across the street from this proposed zoning, I have four generations buried. So, I'm connected to it. I'm also a proud graduate of AB Tech's Nursing Program. So, I work as a registered nurse, Charles George VA in '18, last half a decade. Ten years before that, I worked in the operating room of Mission Hospital. So, that gives you an idea of who I am, what I do. You know, I was just trying to figure out what's going on, you know, just the whole idea of going from a residential area. You know, it used to be a trailer park right there, and some residential house up on top, and I was just trying to figure out what's really going on. So, I went to the Comprehensive Land Use Plan that Ms. Trumpy was speaking of, and I couldn't help when I found this one area. And if y'all would, not mine, I appreciate you listening to me, I just want to mention this. Distinction between Commercial Service and Employment Districts. And the reason I bring that up is Walmart, Lowe's, all that's pretty good distance away. That's all EMP District. That's the grocery stores, that's Ingalls, you know, some of the, one of the top ten employers in the county. It goes on to say, "The districts were part of the original limestone zoning. Notice that previous versions of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan were adequately addressed the differences between these two districts. The EMP District was primarily intended to be a district comprised of industrial, office development, in essence, a district where the county's employers are located. As retail use is allowed as a conditional use within the district, a large amount of the EMP District has been developed as commercial retail centers." We have banks in that same area, car wash, even a couple other types of places, including ABC Store. "The Commercial District was primarily intended to provide areas of clustered commercial development and to encourage the concentration of commercial activities near major traffic arteries. In the future, comma, as commercial, comma, industrial, and office developments increase, the county should pay close attention to the separation between the uses and existing housing, comma, in order to provide residents with protection from disturbances associated with large-scale commercial, industrial, and office development. Additionally, it should be recognized that while the EMP District is primarily intended for the office and industrial uses, small-scale retail uses are part of a large manufacturing, industrial office development may be appropriate." It went on to say, "The intent of this Comprehensive Land Use Plan that we use," it's on buncombecounty.org, it was updated 2013, "is to enable citizens and decision-makers to understand the context of land use in Buncombe County in order to develop more informed decisions." Am I out of time?
Yeah, you have three minutes.
I wish I'd known. Sorry about that.
I told that to the first person, so I thought you heard. If you can just finish up, I'll give you another 10 seconds to finish what your position is.
You know, if we could bring the PowerPoint up and you look at it.
10 seconds, sir.
All right. This red is Commercial Service. If you develop, if this turns into Commercial Service, it'll be one of the largest commercial services in North Buncombe, along with what's already sitting adjacent that's empty, not being used by Tractor Supply and the US Postal Service right there.
Thank you, Mr. Holcomb. Are any other members of the public wish to be heard? Yes, ma'am. It's three minutes, just.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Penny Olson, and I live at 98 Clark's Chapel Road. My husband and I have lived there for 16 years, and the piece of property that we're discussing is literally, in southern terms, a spit up the road from us. I don't think that it would be in our best interest, knowing that they are currently taking Monticello Road, buying those homes, and making them commercial, that it should sneak over onto our street. I would really appreciate if you would consider, I don't have any grand words like the rest of them do, but please say no to this. It just doesn't seem right that we should have to have, but I would consider random commercial things on a piece. No one wants commercial in their residence. I can't see it doing any good for our street or our neighborhoods. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Any other members of the public wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners. My name's Tim Holcomb. I'm Chris's brother. I was the lone person at the Planning and Development Meeting. I'm glad I came. I was glad to be a part of these meetings. Basically, traditionally, that's where this road, when you come off the ramp on the Clark's Chapel, is where the county started. Weaverville and the Commercial District was on the other side of the highway and up on Monticello Road and over on New Stock Road, and it was kind of always country. And while I don't have problems really with the pottery place and a little landscaping company, I worry about the future since it can be done with whatever. I don't think it could support, without any sewer, a lot of development on the commercial end of it, but I worry about the future and what it's going to do to that neighborhood. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holcomb. Any other, yes, sir, in the third row.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, for letting me speak. My name's John Yurko. I'm an architect. I live within the, close enough to this property where I got the letter and the notice of this hearing. I live just off of Clark's Chapel Road, about a quarter mile away. I was in, on the Buncombe County Board of Adjustment back when the, if you remember, it was a contentious hearing over the concrete plant at the Flat Creek exit. And one of the issues that came up about that was, I think, relevant in this case, which is the proximity to major arteries leading to the schools. And I think, aside from what's already been said about congesting and otherwise residential, fairly serene residential artery, I think that the fact that it's heavily trafficked at the beginning of school and at the end of the school day as a route to both North Buncombe Elementary, up Clark's Chapel Extension, and at the end of Clark's Chapel where the high school is, I think the idea of rezoning this thing to commercial could, could cause some safety concerns, some safety issues. And I just would ask that that be considered in this rezoning. I know that we can't, in this rezoning hearing, really affect what occupies this once rezoning happens, but the fact that heavy equipment storage is allowable in CS, I think, is alarming for this intended target rezoning in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yurko. Any other members of the public wish to be heard? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Randy Hints. This is my wife, Sue. We are here representing Salvaterra Pottery. We are one of the two parcels that is up for consideration at this point. And to answer your question, Mr. Commissioner, the retail space that would be made available through the pottery studio consists of a gallery of approximately 150 square feet. It is primarily a manufacturing facility where there could be as many as five people, six people there manufacturing pottery. My wife has worked out of her studio now for onwards of 20 years that has evolved from cramming our basement to a spot where she now needs a larger facility. This facility or this property, as you can see by the information you have, is a transitional area between commercial and residential. The current zoning of that property is an R3, so when it comes right down to it, there could potentially be as many as 50 or more residential units on that property. We feel like there are some aesthetic issues, given the fact that it's immediately adjacent to the highway, and you get the traffic noise, the visuals of that traffic, and feel like it may be more appropriate to have that property rezoned for this type of use. A commercial, a pottery studio is very low-impact. There is a similar, Michael Hatch with his Crucible Glass Works has a piece of property that was a subdivision of this tract previously. He is an artist there, conducting his business with apparently minimal impact to the community. Ours would be a very similar approach. We may have an occasional retail customer that visits the gallery, but our primary purpose there is going to be manufacturing of pottery that gets shipped to galleries, as it stands right now, shipped to places all over the U.S. at this point. So, there'd be very little retail traffic. The use of this property as the, as an SCS is, yeah, is compatible, and largely is recommended by the land use plan as being consistent, stating that it uses, its uses will largely be separated from low-density residential uses. Both parcels contain previously graded areas of flat topography that are conducive for developing along existing road corridors while preserving existing vegetation, topographical features that will screen existing and adjacent lower-density residential development. Our plan is to develop on previously disturbed graded areas. Our plan is to develop on previously disturbed graded areas and allow that area to remain intact as buffers.
Okay. And if she wants to speak, you have three minutes.
I'd just like to make one comment. I've worked in my basement for 20 years. We're in the subdivision with everybody owning about an acre to an acre and a half, and nobody in the subdivision has any concern whatsoever about me making pottery in the basement. Our operation is going to stay the same way, and it's, I hate to use the word manufacturing, because I like production better, because we're artists, and that's what we're trying to do. Those other commercial places, a little potter can't afford to get into. And this would be an ideal transitional location that's 10 minutes away from our home where I can run my pottery business, so that's why I'm asking for the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hints. Any other members of the public wished to be, yes, sir, behind Ms. Trumpy?
Thank you, Commissioner. My name's George Bowman, I'm the, the grading landscaping party of the, the transition property. I just have a small grading company, I have five employees, we have a few pieces of equipment. I'm just wanting to build a 5,000-square-foot building with a nice facade to match the neighborhood, keep it nice. It once was a trailer park, so the impacted area, it being a trailer park, it was flat. There is septic systems already on the property, there's, there's water on the property. And the way this land is positioned on Kennedy Road, as you, as you come off the exit ramp onto, up to the property, and the property being on the right-hand side, you take a right down Kennedy Road, the closest house that sees this property, they actually look at a bank that was previously graded to develop the flat area which the trailer park itself set on. So there's no visual line sight that sees the flat parcel of land that I'm intended to build the building on, from, from any, from any direction. Just across the street, there's the glass pottery, and just up that road is the church. So a line sight from any resident seeing that property, other than going down the road, there is, there is none that I'm, that I'm aware of. The property along Kennedy Road, all that's well buffered, and my intentions, intent is not to never clear that, because it is a drainage ditch that will, will always be a buffer zone. And then the back property, it kind of falls off pretty steep down to a creek area. The back two acres of that property is really undevelopable for any additional use. Right now, all that's, all that's really good for is the septic area, which, in the septic area, you can't disturb those, those areas. So really, low, low use. Like I say, I've got five guys. I'm wanting to build a nice, clean facility. 90% of the time, my machinery's on jobs. I really just need something big enough to park my pickup trucks and put my, my tools, hand tools inside the building. Like I say, most of the time, machinery's on job, but every now and then I will have a machine stored at the rear of the building above the bank. I don't think they'll have any kind of line of sight from any house to see any of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Any other members of the public wished to be heard? Yes, sir, Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. One thing, looking at this zoning across Bunkham County, along with this point here that they're trying to make, I think brings about a valid point, because when you put "commercial" on something and you're saying what you're going to do, sounds like a very small something here, that might be the intent right now, but later on, what is it? That is a real big question on any of this zoning. And, and the concern that I have would be the MSD lines in North Bunkham. You know crap don't run downhill, or uphill, I mean. So if you look at MSD, look at the lines out there in North Bunkham and where those lines are, and you're going to find out there's a point that they can go to, and they can't go farther north, because it's going to go the other direction, and they don't have equipment deep enough to put sewer lines in to get it. So if you're thinking about the future here, look at the MSD lines, ask your folks here, because if you can't use MSD lines in the future for commercial use and it changes to something even bigger, you're going to come up with a bigger problem to deny it at that point. It's better to deny it now and get your facts together, because, like I say, MSD ought to have been put into this picture here, because if they don't have MSD lines near it or can get it, I'd certainly say deny it, because it could be, it could be a health hazard as well, because if it's been a mobile home park before, or however many mobile homes have been there, these sewer lines and distribution lines could be a health problem even now if you might look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Any other members of the public wished to be heard on this? Hearing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed at 5:22. Any questions for Ms. Trumpy or any comments by the Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to be recognized for a few questions.
Yes, sir, Ms. Moffett.
For Ms. Trumpy.
Yes, sir.
The, the owner of the property is an LLC, who are the members of that?
I couldn't tell you that.
Are the Hints's or Mr. Bowman a member of the LLC?
David McIntosh, he owns the property.
Okay. May I continue, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, please, yes, sir, go ahead.
From a access standpoint, where is the driveway access? Is this on Clark's Chapel or is this on Kennedy?
The, one property acts, has access or has frontage on Kennedy and Clark's Chapel and Coal Road, I believe the other one is just Coal Road. They would have to get their DOT driveway permits at that point. DOT would be the ones that assessed line of sight and traffic conditions to determine whether they would allow a specific driveway access in a specific location.
Do you know which track is for which business?
30 Coal Road, which is the one further east, would be the pottery, and the landscaping would be the one that's fronting Kennedy and Clark's Chapel.
This question's probably for Mr. Bowman, then. Thank you, Ms. Trumpy.
Yes, sir.
So it looks like your side is the side of the old mobile home park?
Yes, sir.
What is the current state of the septic systems there? Were they removed when the?
They were not removed.
When you were doing your site development, if we approve this, what is your intentions regarding those existing systems, just to build on, above them?
No, Stan Crown over at Bunkham County Environmental came out, and there's one that's still left that does have an existing tank, a thousand-gallon tank, with three existing lines that, I actually got to go back before him to review that particular septic system. But if that doesn't work, the tank will work. I am a licensed septic tank installer, so I, I know a little bit about how they go in. And the parcel, the back two acres of that piece of property would be the repair area or the primary area for a new septic that would accommodate, of course, five employees or of what I'm trying to do there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, it seems like the, the folks that live around that area are more concerned about the camel getting his nose under the tent. Mr. Rice mentioned one of my concerns is the current use that they're asking for now is for a pottery production facility and also for a landscaping business, but what happens 10 years from now, 15 years from now, 20 years from now? Since I'm new to the board and I'm not really, that school's yet on the zoning available, does staff have any recommendations regarding an alternative zoning that would potentially satisfy both sides?
And maybe if you could talk about the difference between R3 and CS?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last question.
Could you talk about the difference, what, what additional is permitted in CS that's not permitted in R3, as you answer that?
R3 is primarily a residential district, and CS is primarily a commercial district, so there are a lot more commercial uses allowed in CS. There is a lesser commercial district called Neighborhood Service, but it does not allow any outside storage. So with the landscaping business wanting to occasionally store equipment outside, that, that zoning district wouldn't work for them.
Okay.
Are there any other options in between? I don't think there are.
There are not.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I have a couple of follow-up questions sort of along the same lines. So, you know, thinking about this rezoning, I mean, I'm in agreement that the proposed uses that are, been discussed tonight sound, you know, fairly harmonious with what is happening in this area, but when you think about rezoning it to this, we do have to think about all the different kinds of development that could take place under that new zoning district, not necessarily just what's proposed by the immediate intentions of the property owners. So when you think about that, are there any uses that could go there that, when, when you think about your recommendation on the rezoning, you know, really give you the most pause? Or do you feel that the, you know, that other kinds of uses that could go there, you know, it is, it is, it is along an interstate? And so just talk a little bit about that, you know, some of the more intense kind of uses that can go there, just so we can make sure we're thinking through, you know, those other types of scenarios.
Well, commercial service district, as I said, allows most commercial uses. The, the thing that limits that, of course, is the fact that, that the sewer line is not on that side of the interstate. So anything would have to have a fairly low number of employees in order to, to be successful using septic systems. So the most impactful things, hotels, you know, large retail, are, are not going to be something that, that's going to be able to get their septic permits to, to be able to construct those types of developments.
One other question I had was, the, the other business activity that's happening in the neighborhood that's residential, are those grandfathered properties?
On the other side of the interstate, that is in the town of Woodfun, and they have a, a commercial district there that has commercial uses. On the west side of the interstate, because the town of Weaverville has conditional zoning, and because it was in the ETJ, those businesses, even though they were in their residential R3 district, those businesses, or that business was approved as a conditional zoning.
Okay. But now it's in the county's R3, but it's a grandfathered use because it's, it was occurring before the county zoning.
Exactly, exactly. It's a non-conforming existing use.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Frye?
One gentleman that spoke early said that he had not received notice of, of this, he's holding his hand up there. Did you have anything come back in the mail after your?
We wouldn't have sent him a notice, being three-tenths of a mile away. Statutorily, we're required to notice adjacent property owners only. As a courtesy to the community, we send notices to everyone within a thousand feet, so that the community, larger community will be aware of what's happening, but we don't go out three-tenths of a mile.
All righty, any other discussion or comments? Is there a motion to either approve or deny this rezoning request?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve this request because it is, darn it, I always forget it, consistent with?
The county comprehensive land use plan and reasonable in the public interest.
Yes.
Okay, it's been a motion by Commissioner Frost, is there a second?
Second.
Second by the vice chair. Is there any further discussion? Commissioners, any discussion? I guess my heartburn is just what might be, I just, this one troubles me, I think I'm probably not going to support this this time. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to say something, I could, I could probably go either way on this, but I'm probably going to agree with the, I don't disagree with future concerns, but I would, my position would be to accommodate those that are willing, wanting to improve their current situation and grow their business. I do think MSD, I think that, for the things that was spoke of by those that are concerned, I do think that the MSD is going to have to get the septic out there for any of those to happen, and they may or may not ever happen. But I do, I do think that the two people that spoke regarding improving that property for their businesses seemed sincere to me, as the other folks did too, but, but I think I'm going to be inclined to support it.
Any other discussion? All right, I'll call the question. The motion is to approve the rezoning request. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. No. The rezoning request is granted by five to one vote, the chairman against.
And Ms., just as a procedural, do we only need one vote on that rezoning item? Ms. Trumpy?
That's correct, just the one vote, because it was a public hearing.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business we have is the Mountain Housing request to change the rental mix, and we will, we're calling Commissioner Jones, who is at, at her parents' home with a family illness, and, and we've ruled earlier that she will be permitted to testify by telephone. Commissioner Jones, can you hear me, Commissioner? Commissioner Jones, can you hear?
Yeah, I can, I understand.
Okay, good. All right. And then we make sure we can hear the presentation. Okay, we have Scott Dedman and Wyatt Stevens here to make a presentation. Gentlemen, if you'll go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Wyatt Stevens. I'm a lawyer with Robertson Stevens here in town, and I'm honored to represent Eagle Marketplace LLC in this matter. Eagle Marketplace LLC is essentially a joint venture of two companies, Mountain Housing Opportunities, Inc., a nonprofit here in town, and Eagle Market Street Development Corporation, another nonprofit here in town. They are the owner of the Eagle Marketplace project, which, as many of you probably already know, is located on the corner of Eagle and Market Streets in downtown Asheville. The proposed project is a 90,000-square-foot mixed-use project. The plan calls for 62 apartments to be built, 6,000 square feet of community and neighborhood space, and 7,000 square feet of commercial, retail and office space. This project has been a long time in the making. I'm here today with Scott Dedman, he's the CEO of Mountain Housing Opportunities, and Stephanie Swebsen Twitty, she's the CEO of Eagle Market Street Development Corporation. The reason we're here is there are two county loans in place on this project. There was a $300,000 loan that was approved all the way back in 2010. That money is already in the project. And there is a $2 million loan that has been committed, and there is a deed of trust that's recorded on the, on the property. But no money has been advanced on that loan, because under the terms of that loan and the agreement that we have with the county, that money doesn't come in until the very end of the project, after a CO has been issued, the contractor has been paid in full, and even the retainage has been paid back to the contractor. So that's when the county's final $2 million would come in.
Excuse me, would you report, repeat the, the last three things you said, those conditions?
Okay. So the $2 million loan, under the terms of that agreement, that money does not come in until the end of the project, after the contractor has been paid in full, a CO has been issued, and in fact, even the retainage has been released to the contractor.
Thank you.
That's how it's set up. So what we need tonight is approval by the Commissioners to authorize the staff to make a change to both agreements, and the change is this. Under the terms of these agreements, the way the staff drafted them, and it was signed off on by Eagle Marketplace, the plan was for all 62 of those apartment, apartments to be affordable, defined as follows. to be affordable, defined as follows. Affordable to families with incomes below 60% of the area median income. That's very deeply affordable. To give you an idea of what that means in terms of rent structure, the rent structure would be between $251 and $776 a month, depending on how many bedrooms you would get. That's under the current number, so those get adjusted every year. The area median income, if I may approach, Mr. Chairman, I've got a handout.
Yes, sir.
So these documents are from the Buncombe County Affordable Housing Plan, I have a version with the plan, just a couple of pages.
Thank you, miss.
Thank you.
So a year ago, you may recall that there was a plan presented to this commission based on a study done by the Bowen National Research Firm. And so Bowen looked at a four-county area, including Buncombe County, to evaluate the housing needs within this region. If you look at the third page of the handout, just so you understand what area median income means, we see that 100% of the area median household income last year worked out to, you see, between one person per household and five persons. You go from $39,000 up to $60,500. So when we say 60% of area median income, that would be, you could not make more than that, depending on how many people you had in your household, in order to qualify for the deeply affordable units. Okay? Now, under the existing agreements, all 62 of those units would be capped at 60% of the area median income. We're talking about folks that really don't have a lot. And there's absolutely no question that there is need in this community for those folks. No question about it. If you look at the, another document that I didn't hand up, but another part of the analysis that was done showed that there is approximately 1,700 folks in Buncombe County that can't afford rent and need these units at 60% or 50% of area median income. But somewhat surprising to me, there's another 1,600 people in Buncombe County that could afford up to 100 or 120% of area median income. So that's what the county has defined as workforce housing. And if you look at the other page of the handout, you see this reported, this data reported in that, in that report, you see a continued need for multifamily rental units at less than 60% of area median income. That's the current plan. But you also see a need for workforce housing, that's 80 to 120% of area median income. So folks that are making at or slightly above the area median income, they need houses too, and we all know there is a lack of housing in Buncombe County. So what we're asking for is to take of the 62 units, up to 30 of them, and turn them into workforce housing. That would mean that if folks came and they applied, and they have to apply, they have to produce tax returns and all kinds of documentation, they've got to go through background checks. I mean, this is, this is serious, and we have a professional property manager that does all of this. But they would come in and they would prove that they don't make more than 100 to 120% of area median income, and they could qualify for up to 30 of these units. The remaining 32, so a majority of the units, would remain deeply affordable. That's 60% of area median income. So what we're envisioning here is a mixed-income development that a lot of folks believe is really a better model for projects like this. Why do we need to do this? We need to do this to cash flow a $3 million permanent loan that, by the way, we have a loan commitment in place for, that will enable this project to be completed. So why do we need $3 million? Well, we actually need more than that. We need more than $4.5 million to solve the problem that we have out there. The good news is, we have the money in place if we can get that loan. We can only get that loan if we get this approval of the rent structure, because if you think about it, when we adjust the rent structure, that will generate more income for Eagle Marketplace LLC, and they will be able to fund the loan on the back end. So where's the rest of the money coming from? Well, you all know, and it's in your handout that was posted to the, to the portal, we had a real problem. We hired a highly qualified architect, but the architect hired a structural engineer who was in over his head. And the structural design plans for the original project were fundamentally flawed. I can put, in as simple as terms as they did, just not enough rebar in the concrete. And so after we had spent millions of dollars preparing the site and pouring both the first and the second floor slabs, they went to tighten the second floor slab, and it literally ripped apart. It took us nine months of extensive and expensive engineering by the best concrete engineering firm in the state to determine just how bad the problem was and what the options were to fix it. We looked at potentially wrapping the concrete slabs in carbon fiber. We had all kinds of ideas trying to just get this project back underway, and ultimately our engineers said, your only choice is to rip it all out and start over. The cost just to rip it out was $600,000. That's been completed. We've paid for that. The cost to finish the project, we're expecting a final estimate from the contractor, really within the next week to 10 days. But when you add it all together, both the costs we've already spent and the replacement costs, the total, the total increased cost for this project is more than $4.5 million. So you say, well, why didn't you get it from the responsible parties? Well, we got about half a million dollars from the engineer. That was the full amount of his insurance limits. We got more than $1.5 million from the architect's insurance. That was 90% of their insurance limits. And we collected some, a little bit of money from the various subcontractors, and the general contractor, Weaver Cook, has given us a $300,000 credit toward the ultimate rebuild. I'm throwing a lot of math at you, but the bottom line is this. We can solve this problem. We have very good folks in place that have crunched the numbers extensively over the last six months, and we've got lenders in place that are ready to do this deal, and believe me, no lender is going to lend $3 million on this project if we can't pay them back, and they're satisfied that we can. We just simply need to be able to have this adjusted rent structure to fund that loan. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Moff?
Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to say that this is an important project. I think that it's a, probably a key piece to revitalize that area of our community, and I support it, but I do have some questions. What is the overall cost going to be to build the project?
Scott Dedman will have the details on that.
After the insurance settlements that Wyatt described, the residential component comes down to $12.3 million, and that's right at almost $200,000 per unit. A significant part of that is the additional cost of removing the slabs, which we've already done, and rebuilding the two slabs. I might add, though, that the underground foundational work, which took many months, because of the soil conditions on that site, we actually have more than 200 steel and concrete micro piles underground that are good and well-built and properly built. It was the above-ground foundational structure that was flawed with the inadequate steel reinforcement. So it's approaching $14 million, except that I'm counting, I'm knocking that down to $12.3 because of the insurance settlements that we got.
When it comes to how the county has structured its loan agreement regarding this particular project, will the loan from the county go toward debt retirement of debt incurred to build the project, or is it needed to build the project?
It'll go toward debt retirement. There's a construction loan in place with TD Bank, and a lot of this money that's coming in at the end will be used to pay that off. The city, to their credit, the city, that was their plan too. They wanted to put the bulk of their money in at the end, and when we went in front of city council last November, they agreed to bring their money in at 50% completion. So the county's money really will be coming in to pay off the last bit of debt that we should have on it. Now, obviously here, you know, there will be the permanent loan from the lender that we've lined up, which is the whole reason we're here tonight.
From a loanholder perspective, where, what's the county's position?
So I have a letter on that, that my, one of my partners is working on the real estate aspects of this. You know, it's, it's complicated. The currently, of course, the construction loan, TD Bank is first, Neighbor Works Capital is second, the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency is third, this is currently, the city of Asheville is fourth, the county, this large one from the county will be fifth. And so what'll happen is, obviously TD Bank gets paid off, they slide out, everybody drops down, and frankly, Commissioner Moffett, I'm not exactly sure what happens with that permanent loan and where it, where it comes in. I just, I can't answer that from this document.
Last question. How confident are you with the flexibility that you're asking for that the debt service will be satisfied?
I'm 100% confident.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Stevens or Mr. Dedman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Frye?
I've watched Eagle Market Street since it was back at the city in the 2000s, and when this project was underway, I did talk to Mr. Desmond, and I told him, I said, this, this is a little bit big. And I understand, I haven't figured out if the, I saw him cut the concrete out. We've had a crane down there for two and a half years. We're paying money every month, every, how much it is, from what I heard is $5,000. It's set there for one year. I watched him re-way it in. I watched him take the concrete out. Now it's set there for another four months. So there's another $20,000, just not doing anything. So how, as a commissioner in the county, you know, we, the commissioners before I came made a deal to loan $2 million to this project, and we got it to where we put it at the end of this project. I want this project to happen. I really do. 100% happen. But as you watch it, and the people down there that, that work down in that area, that look over there and want it to happen, seeing what has happened, and they're not happy because there is people that do talk to me. What did we use? We took the crane and used to take the concrete out. Now, I saw a trackhoe down there moving dirt and taking more stuff out of the ground. Mr. Desmond, what was that, sir, that they were removing?
Commissioner Frye and Mr. Dedman can answer too. My understanding is that the crane, there's a couple of things with the crane. If you look at where it's located in the building, it would be very expensive to demobilize that crane and take it back off-site. It's tens of thousands, if not over $100,000, just to demobilize that crane. So I was involved in the decisions and the discussions with the general contractor over, what do we do about the crane when we realize this was a problem? The problem was identified in October of 2014. As I said earlier, it took nine months just to get the full scope of the problem from the engineer. It was not until really this winter, early spring, that we had revised design drawings that we could use to then give to the general contractor to come up with the new quote. It has taken the general contractor longer than we hoped it would to come up with his quote. We got it a couple of weeks ago. He's crunching the numbers. He's working on the subcontractors, trying to get that number down to something that we can all agree on. But the crane, it just made sense to leave that crane in place. We knew we were going to need it once we determined the demolition was necessary. We knew we'd need it for the demolition. You saw that happen when all the concrete was coming out. The dirt in there, there were some issues that the engineer found with the foundation. The foundations had to be addressed. I'm as confident as I can be that that's why the crane was in there moving dirt that you saw. We hope, Commissioner Frye, that we'll have, we'll be under contract within a couple of weeks. If this commission approves what we're asking for tonight, that will ensure that we can move forward with the permanent loan. It will ensure that we can move forward with the project, and we would anticipate breaking ground, if you can use that term over there...
I've got time.
...with the new construction by early September. We're as frustrated as you and the community are about how long it has taken to unravel this mess. I can't tell you how complicated the litigation was. I'm just grateful that it's over and that we got the most amount of money we possibly could get from the responsible parties. But our plan is to finish this project and to get it done, and it to be a project that the county is proud of.
And they deserve the project to be done.
Yes, they do.
And I'm 100% behind that, but it's like I said, I've watched it go along for years, the city borrowing money. The cities come along, I think they give ins another $3 million, from what I watched at the meeting, and they stepped up on this. But what you're doing is, you're asking us as commissioners now to take a 62-unit affordable housing thing to 32 units affordable, then rest workforce. Now, how much more rent are you going to be able to get out of the workforce compared to the $251 and the $770 if you go up to the high side?
So at the rent on the workforce housing will be between $1,100 and $1,400 a month, depending on the number of bedrooms.
Okay, I understand this, but when you came before us wanting this money, or not before me, but before the commissioners before, that it stepped up, that we or they were giving you $2 million because it was going to be 62 units of affordable housing. Now it's going to be split in half. Should the taxpayers of Buncombe County step up $2 million, or should they step up $1 million for? You know, instead of, I know there's, there was a deal made at $2 million. I agree. And I'm, and it's on the backside when it's done, and I want to see it done. But are, are we, should we be the ones that accept basically another six, half a deal? That's, that's the way I look at it.
So I would say this. If you go back and look at the documents where the commission unanimously approved this project, 5-0, the $2 million loan, there was no discussion about the rents. There was no discussion about 60% of area median income, 100%, 100, there was no discussion about that whatsoever. The commissioners that approved this loan didn't discuss it. It was county staff, and I'm not faulting anybody, that asked that it be structured that way, and my client was more than happy to agree because quite candidly, my client has built over 600 affordable units, measured in that way, 60% of area median income, over 600 affordable housing units in Buncombe County over the last 28 years. And that's what we wanted to build. And I can promise you this, and I said this to the city, that if it happens, that when we get this project done, that we can convert some of those 30 workforce housing units back to quote-unquote affordable units, we'll do it, because that's the mission of this organization. That's what they do. Having said that, as I said before, I believe, and my client believes, that workforce housing is a huge need in Buncombe County too. The data shows that, the county affordable plan shows that. Ms. Cottrell from the county, I don't know if she's here, but she supports this plan. Mr. Creighton is going to oversee the construction. He supports this plan.
Mr. Creighton is going to be overseeing, you're going to be overseeing the construction?
Scott and I had a conversation yesterday about me getting involved in the, in the, in the project, going to the updates, to the meetings, and I agreed if the board was willing for me to do that, that I would certainly be a part of it.
And if I can elaborate there, one, I want to take a minute to thank Mountain Housing for the contributions you have... for the contributions you have done and a lot of completed projects. I'm sure this is not what you chose to have happen, all these horrible pitfalls, and, you know, would all of us like to see all 62 units affordable? Absolutely. But, I don't think any of us want this not to work. So, in different discussions, Commissioner Friar, with Scott, with some senior leadership of county, I asked if we were to approve this, if Assistant County Manager Creighton would be able to oversee, not oversee, but meet on perhaps a monthly basis, immediately review with also Greg Israel, any pertinent information, and I did that selfishly, because I do, I did have qualms about it, but with Mr. Creighton in there, I feel completely at ease, and also with Mountain Housing's track record. So, that's why.
I agree, I agree that this is the best way to make this work, because I've sat and watched Mr. Creighton, Mr. Israel. They put up AB Tech, they put up, you know, all these constructions, and they're pretty well-done, and I would feel a whole lot more comfortable stepping up to do this. If, if, if we have to involve Mr. Stafford, Mr. Creighton, Mr. Israel, all three to have meetings, then I'm 100% behind this deal.
Thanks, sir.
But, that's, that's a condition that I would honestly look at.
All right. I thought our, I'm going to take what Commissioner Frost has done as a motion.
Public hearing.
That's right. That's right. You're right. Public hearing first.
Hold that thought.
Yeah, and we'll come back, and then we'll...
We're moving along. We got a, any other questions before our public hearing? Thank you.
Just one, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
You might have mentioned this already, and I didn't pick up on it. If you come out of the ground in September, when do you feel you'll complete the project?
December of 2017.
So, 16-month schedule?
We hope so.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got one before we do the public comment. What happens if we don't do this?
This is our, this is our last shot. You cannot believe how many pieces we've had to put in place to get to this point. The moving parts are remarkable on this project. This is the last piece. If we don't do this, in all candor, Eagle Market won't happen.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions before public hearing?
And I guess, too, I know this goes without saying, but if there is a potentiality of eventually turning all 62 back to affordable, because, you know, that, the staff very wisely suggested that at the beginning, and I would hope that could be a goal, that all 62 go back to affordable, as a goal.
That's, that's certainly Eagle Market Place's plan and intention, but, you know, predicting how that will play out over the next 10 or 15 years is, it's hard to do at this point. So, I can certainly make the representation that I, that same that I did at the city, that is absolutely their hope and expectation, that they can make more of these units quote-unquote "affordable." But, again, there is a need for, for workforce housing, and this will meet that need.
Any other questions or comments before we hear from the public?
I have some after, I think.
Okay. Then, I'll declare the public hearing in this open at 6 o'clock. Does any member of the public wish to be heard, Mr. Oglesby? Any other member?
You what?
Mr. Bellamy?
Three minutes?
Three minutes, yes, sir.
I can get done in a minute and a half, past my cocktail hour. Chairman Grant, commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. This is my first time at these new digs. You guys are coming a long way. You're moving uptown. When I was a commissioner, we were down there in the old courthouse over there. I may have to reconsider run for this job. I don't know. I'm here representing the North Carolina Housing and Finance Agency. I've been a board member for 15 years, and been working with Mountain Housing Opportunity for a lot of those 15 years. They do an excellent job. Y'all all know that, and our, excuse me, staff works real well with their staff, and just a lot of good has come out of it. We have a pretty big interest in this project. We helped them with a federal tax credit of $550,000, which supported a $4.8 million investment from the Tax Credit Syndication. Mountain Housing also received a state tax credit loan of $1.2 million. Also, Mountain Housing got a rental production program loan of $930,000. The state is very involved in this, North Carolina Housing Finance is very involved in this. So, we want to see the project go. I have a email from Bob Q. Cab, who is our executive director, and they support this. Without this rent structure change, they may not make it. They're not going to have, we all know cash flow.
That's right.
If you don't have the cash flow to pay your bills, folks don't fly. I'm sorry. So, this is a very legitimate request. North Carolina Housing Finance is behind it 100%. We want to see this project go. I've been involved in it from the very beginning with Scott and his staff. So, it's a great project. It's going to help the city, good tax base, going to help a lot of people. Maybe we can get back to affordable housing all the way. Maybe not. I don't know. But, the project needs to go on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your service as a commissioner, Bill.
Did you open the public hearing?
Yes. Mayor Bellamy?
Good evening, everyone. It is indeed a pleasure to be here, and I just want to say, first of all, thank you so very much for allowing me this opportunity to speak, and I want to say publicly, thank you for the investment that you've already made in this development. I do want to publicly say thank you to Scott Dedman and to Mountain Housing Opportunity and Stephanie Twitty for the investment that you've made in this time. I am completely, utterly biased about this project. Not only because I was mayor when we started it, but I can remember sitting in Mount Zion's fellowship hall, and African-American leaders had joined together and held me accountable to say, "You said, when you were city council member, that you would get this done. You said that we would see some revitalization on the block. You haven't done that. You've let us down." From that day to this one, I believe I've worked pretty hard, bothered people about this project. Stephanie did a good job of bringing in people and consultants from all over the country to try to look at this development before it got to this point, to say, "Who can we have best to help get this project done?" I said, "We got a local group right here in Asheville, North Carolina. I have no doubt can get this project done." So, I asked Cindy to fix this for me. In the process of Cindy fixing this, she has been hit on the chin repeatedly by the public, by members of different staffs, saying, "What are you doing? What have you done? This is a large investment." So, I stand here with her, with Scott, and hopefully with you with this restructuring, believing that we have the best in the community to show the African-American community. We believe in this project, we believe in you, and we believe that this is a beacon of hope. Although there's development that's occurring, this development was born out of owners, landowners, who were African-American, who wanted to see this development happen. So, today, I'm not asking for, they're not asking for additional money, just restructuring. And we don't know what tomorrow may bring, so we may see the restructuring of how the units are affordable or workforce. But, I ask today that you commit to continuing to partner with one of the best nonprofits in this community and in the state. Thank you all. Again, thank you, Cindy, for your leadership.
Thank you, Mayor, and also thank you for your service to the city. Mr. Rice, any other members of the public wish to be heard after Mr. Rice?
He does the cleanup. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I guess a question would go back to, why was it not called earlier? Because if you're doing a construction job and the permitting is going about somewhere or another, it ought to have been called a lot earlier, in my opinion, and, and maybe it'd have saved us a lot more money. And the other thing is, that bothers me, is the 30 that you're talking about on living wage, they're going to have background checks. They didn't say anything about anybody else having background checks on the other 32. So, I'm wondering if it is fair to both parties that's going to be in here, if all of them are going to be background checked? That, that would be something I would be thinking as well. Now, the bigger concern is always about money. If you're going to listen to the attorney about the liability and what they've paid out, my question would be, what is the future liability, and how much more did they up their liabilities in case there's another disaster? That don't mean what, if John's involved, it don't mean it's going to be perfect. So, what about the liability going forward? Let's talk about that. Let's get questions answered. What has the attorney done about that? Because I want to make sure the second time around, it's not as expensive as the first time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Any other members of the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing, the public comment portion closed at 6:07. Comments by the board?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Commissioner?
One I want to thank, I do want to thank your attorney, Mr. Stevens, for a, an excellent job in clarifying where you've been and where you're at, and it was just a great job in answering all the questions that we have. And I, I remember, Mr. Dedman, going to this site with you when I was a new commissioner, just, I mean, I didn't know, you know, I didn't know what area was the South Slope. But, when I went down there, I was very excited about the project and what was going on and the cooperation between the community and the excitement. So, and there is no money being spent by this commission to do this. This is, I understand the shifting and the cash flow, and there is, for those that may have questions about those specific amounts and how they're shifting, that information is, is in the, what we've provided on the, on the agenda, so all that is in there. So, I am looking forward to the day that you, I know, I'm looking forward to the day it's completed. Some other people are excited about looking forward to it, too, but I'll bet you'll be the most excited guy in the room when it's completed with what all has happened, and so I'm going to be glad to, happy to support this restructuring tonight.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the new rents and housing affordability mix subject to John Creighton and Greg Israel reviewing the construction costs and documents now and going forward. The construction costs and documents will be available to Mr. Creighton and Mr. Israel.
As they request.
I second that.
So, a motion by Commissioner Frost, seconded by Commissioner Friar. Basically, the motion was for John Creighton and, and Greg Israel to be involved in the, in the planning and the discussions of the construction and to, and to restructure the loan. Our mic was off. Does that, does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other comments by commissioners?
I'm sorry, this is Holly.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there, was that a motion that was made just in about?
Yes.
Could you, could you speak up and, and a little bit louder? I just want to make sure I understand it before we vote on it.
Thank you.
I think I got it, but I want to just hear it one more time, please.
Okay. Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Frost has made a motion to approve the restructuring as we've been discussing, with the proviso that John Creighton and Greg Israel are involved in the construction, planning, progress.
Oversight.
Oversight of the project, but to approve the restructuring requested by Mr. Stevens and Mr. Dedman.
Got it.
And that was made by, and the second was by Commissioner Friar. Okay.
Got it.
I'd just like to make one comment before we vote. Just to say, I agree with all the other comments the commissioners have made. This is a really important project to downtown and this neighborhood, and as Mayor Bellamy said, it's been, it's been an effort that's been years and really decades in the making, and it's a project that, it is important, and people really care about it and want to see it get finished. So, I really appreciate all the financial partners in the project sticking together on it and looking for a, a solution that there's already, there's, the taxpayers have committed a lot to this project, but looking for ways to come up with a solution to carry it forward that would not require further financial commitments, but getting, while getting the gap filled. So, thank you all for, for your work on this, and we do look forward to it resuming. So, thank you for the chance to make those comments.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll make about the same comments I made when we first approved the money. This is a neighborhood that has been chronically underserved and overlooked with all the progress that's gone on around it. It's a community that deserves it. They want it. They got together. They're united. It's a, it's a, the rates are still below market value, even the high end, from what I've heard. And so, you know, we, we have a moral obligation to make sure that everybody who lives here can afford, everybody who works here and chooses to live here can afford it. And I, I think to come here and not ask for more money is remarkable. Mr. Stevens, it was nice enough to tell me some of the legalities and I, amazing lawyering and amazing work to get the money you got. Mr. Dedman has talked to me repeatedly about how important this is to Mountain Housing and how important it is to the mission, that we're going to, we're going to do something about affordable housing in this area. We can talk and talk and talk. You've got to put your money where your mouth is, and you're doing that. You've done it 600 times. You're about to do it, I think, another, how many do we have here? 62? Maybe 32 right off the bat and 30, a little bit less. So, I think it's wonderful. I hate it happened. I appreciate you being upfront with us, because a lot of times I've seen in my time here is, when mistakes are made, people just cover it up and you don't hear from them again until it gets to the point that it's too late to do anything. So, I think y'all were proactive. Horrible mistake made, but you got money from people that made it as much as you could, and we're trying to make the best of a bad situation. But, I certainly don't think the people who have worked on it, the people who will benefit, and the people who can live downtown for the first time are going to look back and think, "Boy, you should have done something different." So, I'm certainly for it, and I appreciate Ms. Twitty, see you nodding your head. Thank you so much for the amount of energy. I echo what the other commissioners have said, and I'll leave it at that. Any other comments?
I may have been a little rough, but all I want is this done. I was, when Brownie and them hadn't even come on city council yet, this was being put forward, and that was city council, so I just would like to see this done and done right, Scott, and I think in's well, and with John and them tied into it, I'm very, very happy. So, I am supportive.
Okay. Commissioner Jones, do you have anything else?
No, I, I agree with the comments today, and I'm glad that people kept shoulder to the wheel. I know it was painful, and there were a lot of question marks, but everybody kept at it and saw the long vision, and I'm just grateful for, for that commitment to, to that area of downtown. I think it will be a game changer in that arena, and I'm ready to vote for it.
All right. Any other comments or questions or statements? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion by Commissioner Frost, seconded by Commissioner Friar, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. All right. We have pulled the thank you, ladies and gentlemen, who are here on the Mountain Housing, and we're looking forward to an update when you get going. Thank you. We have dealt with the North Carolina County Commission. There won't be any commissioners going to that this time around, and we will not be appointing a delegate. Our next matter of business is board appointments. We have one vacancy on the Agricultural Advisory Board. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Alex Lang.
Okay, Mr. Lang's been nominated.
Alan Lang.
Alan Lang. Any other nominations? All those in favor of Mr. Lang, say aye.
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 Those know, he is appointed by seven to zero vote. Health and Human Services Board, there's one vacancy. Any nominations?
Jim Pitts, please.
Vice Chair's nominated Jim Pitts. Any other nominations? All those in favor of appointing Mr. Pitts to the Health and Human Services Board, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Pitts is appointed by seven to zero vote. Asheville Regional Airport Authority?
I happily nominate David Gant.
And could I ask a favor, please? We need to appoint him to both...
We need to appoint him to both the Greater Asheville Regional Airport Authority and the Asheville Regional Airport Authority.
That's right. We're still two legal entities. There is. Still some, some baggage from the old days where we had, yes, I remember. I forgot about that. Thank you. Two appointments. Is that for both boards?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any, any other nominations? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
Aye.
And Mr. Gant is appointed. Thank you. Seven, zero. Tourism Development Authority, we have one reappointment. Any nominations?
I'll nominate Leah Ashburn.
Ms. Ashburn's been nominated. Any other nominations? All those in favor of Ms. Ashburn, say aye.
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 Seven to zero. Ms. Ashburn is appointed. Next, we have the Capital School Fund Commission. We have two vacancies. Nominations?
I'll nominate Brownie Newman.
Okay, Mr. Newman's been nominated.
Second.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Carol Peterson.
Joe Belcher's been nominated.
Carol Peterson.
Carol Peterson's been nominated.
I nominate Ellen Frost.
Ellen Frost has been nominated. Any other nominations? All right, then I will, let's vote each seat separately, and if you'll poll. We have four nominations, Belcher, Frost, Newman, and Peterson. Will we poll the board? We're going to, for seat one, we have two seats.
He was nominated for a seat.
You can only vote for one person this time.
Right, but why don't we poll at one seat, one vote, and then we do seat two, one vote?
Okay. Start down here.
Carol Peterson.
Carol Peterson.
Brownie Newman.
Carol Peterson.
Brownie Newman.
Brownie Newman.
Okay, Holly.
Uh, Brownie Newman.
Okay.
All right.
First seat would be Brownie Newman.
All right, seat number two. We have four nominations for seat number two. If you'll poll the commission.
You can start down that end again if you want.
Carol Peterson.
Okay.
Carol Peterson.
Frost.
So, this is for seat, I'm so confused.
This is seat two. We have two appointments.
Seat number two. Two appointments.
Carol Peterson.
Ellen Frost.
Frost.
Okay, Holly.
Ellen Frost.
All right. Then Commissioner Frost and Newman are appointed to that. Adult Care Community Advisory Committee, we have six vacancies. Any nominations?
Toya Hall.
Are there, Ms. Hall, Toya Hall's been nominated. Any other nominations? All those in favor of Ms. Hall, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. She is appointed, or he is appointed by seven to zero vote. Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, we have four vacancies.